Welcome to our meeting. First order of business is a public hearing on sewer rates. We have to adjust the sewer rates every year to make sure that we have enough money to run a sewer plant. As you know, the revenues have fallen off in the demise of the Pfizer plant. So expenses and primarily the debt payments have to be paid whether there's somebody here paying them or not. Anyways, so we have here, I can read every line on here, but basically what we're doing is we're raising the monthly sewer rates $1 a month. Single-family residential will be $38 a month. Residential with metered water shall be a minimum of $38 a month, but whatever the meter is after that. Commercial sewer users without water meters, table for that, and basically charge, it looks like one unit for each bathroom. And a unit, of course, is what a residential is, $38. Sewer rents for commercial users without a water meter shall be $38. Multiply by a sewage strength factor of 1.15 equals 43.70 a unit, okay, for a commercial. Commercial sewer users with a water meter, they'll charge on a per-unit basis. And then it has a sliding scale by the amount of gallons used, goes up to 1,000 gallons. That's the highlights of it. Is there any questions from the public? Anyone wish to comment on this? Welcome to the meeting to the public. Any comments or discussion from the board? Okay. Harrison, do you have anything to comment on this?
No, I don't.
You figured this. Okay. That being the case, then I will close the meeting to the public. People act on this right now. Okay. I move this to the floor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Trustee Dart.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. Okay. Now open the meeting to the public. Public may address the board on any topic at this time. And you also have a chance at the end of the meeting to address the board on any topic. Anyone wish to ... okay. Minutes of the previous meeting of April 1st. Are there any errors or omissions noted? I make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, bills. Harrison, are there any additions or deletions?
No additions or deletions. You have a new format. Yes, sir. We have our new computer system.
Yeah.
Software up.
Harrison?
I was just saying you have a new format.
Yeah, yeah.
New software.
We're commenting on that. Okay. Motion to pay the bills will come down for that.
Second.
A motion to throw the vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Just notice, which I didn't have on my other sheet here, we also had a meeting of minutes of the meeting from April 8th. Any comments on that from the board? I make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Minutes are approved, bills are approved. I ask for three correspondents.
We have several this evening. The first is attention Mayor Matha and village trustees. The interest of a dog park located in the village has been a conversation with many village residents. A recommendation for its location would be at the Rousas Point Civic Center. People would enter at the Montgomery Street location entrance and the fence and area would be to the south of the baseball dugout along the tall grass area. Another alternative could be vacated property owned by the village. This topic was previously, has been previously been discussed in the past village board meetings. Thank you, Lori Langlois. And Mrs. Langlois is here this evening.
Okay. What exactly is a dog park?
It's actually a fenced-in area where the dogs, you could let the dogs off their leashes and they could, you know, have an area to run. There'd probably be like, you know, dog bags for the, to pick up their waste and then a trash can. But it'd be a fenced-in area where they could run. They'd have to be leashed until they get into the fenced area.
How big is it roughly? What size is needed?
Oh, I'm not good with size for like, but, yeah, the help could do.
Thirty by 100?
I would say 50 by, yeah.
Yeah, about that.
75 or something like that would even work, I would think. You know, basically maybe the size of this room would need to be.
Yeah, just to have something where they can, where they could run. But there's nothing anywhere in the village where you can unleash a dog and.
I wish we'd have known this about three months ago. We could've, well, we could've incorporated it in the budget, which is already passed. You know, if the board decided to go along with it, because that's, you know, have you got a price on the estimate for the fencing?
No, I don't. But I did, I have spoken to a few people. I mean, we could even like do, like try to do a fundraiser, try to have, you know, supplies donated, just, you know, and then just try to get it done that way. But there is a big interest.
We have the funds from our hard grant.
I don't know, the recreation grant?
Yeah.
I don't know yet. We're going to talk about that later, but we don't know how much that's been committed to the projects that we put the grant in for.
What we could look at again.
Now, how high does the fence have to be, four feet or?
It's probably about five. Yeah, I'm not, you know, five feet.
Well, we have four feet and six feet.
Yeah, I would say anywhere from five to probably six, so you don't want, you know.
We have a vacant lot. Where is that now? Over behind, up by the blue building behind you. To the north of you? Well, there's a couple houses between you and the lot.
Your trail park.
Huh?
Your old trail park.
Is that what that is?
It's not a trail park, Lynn Ron's place.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. It's kind of a landlocked place. We have to look into it to see what we, is there access to that town? You know, like that from the street, like you wouldn't have to.
Yeah, there is. It'd be an excellent place, Ron, because as far as neighbors are concerned, you know, you're only really concerned with one. Ron's building and his tenants, that's it.
Because the other three sides are basically.
Yeah. It's free food and, you know, people would have to drive up in there to see what was going on.
Right.
You know. I'm all for this project for nothing else, just for dogs to be able to socialize with other dogs.
Right.
I have a problem with mine. He's not socializing with other dogs.
Not socializing with people.
Well, that one, that one isn't with us anymore.
Oh, oh, sorry. That's the one that bit me?
He died from the bite.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So I've had to go to Plattsburgh.
Yeah. Yeah, it would definitely be a good idea.
I'll tell you what, trustee Dart, would you like to head off this informally? And what we'll do is, you know, get an idea, not a formal thing, I don't know if we can do it this year or not, but get a rough idea of how big it is. Probably, I don't know how big that lot is, but.
Well, it's huge.
Good size, yeah. At least a couple acres.
Okay, that'd be too big to fence that in. Plus, we could use electric fence, that's cheap. Works on dogs or not? Probably not.
No.
Probably not a good idea, okay?
No.
But anyways, maybe we could get some ideas together and, you know, like where they would, like if that's picking up, it'd have its own parking then.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You know, and parking up there and stuff and.
Yeah, the bigger the better.
That would be ideal.
Talk to Mrs. Langlois there and see what, you know, show her where the spies, you know.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And see what we can do. Because we might be, you know, the way they do fence now, it isn't like the old days where they fill a hole and put a pipe in, put concrete in, and, you know, it was a big deal. Now they just take those pipes and push them down with a front-end loader or something.
Yeah.
And then just stretch the fence around it. So we could probably do it ourselves, you know, with our workers if they have time. And they're pretty, a pretty tight schedule now, you know, going into the summer, but yeah. See where we go.
Work on logistics first of it all, plus, you know. I'm sure we put Ron's shoulder, the property lines and everything, okay?
Okay.
That'd be great.
All right. How's that for a start?
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Okay.
We have three more letters.
Okay.
The next one is from Montgomery Host Hook and Ladder. Dear Mayor and trustees, please be advised that our annual election of officers held on April 2nd, 2019. The following members were elected by our membership to serve as chiefs until April 2020. We submit their names for your approval. Chief is Mike LeBlanc, first Assistant Chief Junior Moore, second Assistant Chief Sean LeBeau. Thank you for your consideration of these members. Respectfully yours, Dennis Roberts. We do need a vote on that.
Okay. I make a motion, we accept the slate as read.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay.
The next is a letter from the American Legion Auxiliary. The American Legion Auxiliary Unit 912 of Rousas Point is requesting the village of Rousas Point to grant permission to distribute poppies for donations. These poppies will be made available at various locations throughout the village during the month of May. Therefore, your permission would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your cooperation concerning this matter. Sincerely, Janice St. John.
Okay. You know, every year we get this, and it always bothers me that they have to ask permission to do something this worthy, you know?
Right, yeah.
I mean, it just seems, just doesn't seem right to me, but anyways.
I make a motion that we allow the American Legion to sell poppies.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I agree.
It just seems funny that, you know.
And the last one, this was received via email. Good evening. I live at 407 Route 9B, Rousas Point. I am aware that I am not considered in the village, but I have paid the village for my water for more than 30 years. My neighbors across the street have village water also, but they also have village sewer. I would like to petition the board to also allow me to obtain sewer service as well. I understand that should I be granted this request, there would be a hookup fee. It is my wish to be considered for this service. I am currently paying over $100 just for water. It is just my husband and I living here and our home is paid off, so we don't plan on leaving anytime soon. Please let me know what steps I need to take to advance this process. Thank you for your time and consideration of my request. Respectfully, Mrs. Trudy Murphy.
Okay, I talked to Supervisor Pelkey about this. And the problem is, the sewer line is on the other side of the street and we can't go under the road because it's a state highway. The neighbors that she refers to on her side of the street connected on to another neighbors that was already connected in, and they have their own lift pump. So for her to connect on, if I got this right, they would have to get easements or rightaways from two or three of the other neighbors to let her put in several hundred feet of sewer line, I think, to connect on. In other words, it wouldn't go directly into our sewer line. It'd be a, kind of a big deal. I don't, I was under the impression after talking to him that it wasn't really physically doable.
Right.
I suppose he could go up and talk to her. You know who they are.
Yeah.
They just put that new garage up a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
They're nice people, but I mean, it's just, with that state highway there, it really ties our hands on what we can do. Because there's, like, the bottle deposit place, they have redemption center, they have village water. They hooked on the laternal thing next door, but I don't know. She's across the street and farther down a little bit. Or no, she, I don't think, no, she's not as far, far down as they are.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
She first or past them?
Just almost across the road from laternals.
That's what I was thinking.
Oh, no. She's a little farther down. She's two, one house down, I think, or two lots down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I suppose what I could do is ask Brian to go up there and talk to her and explain what she'd have to do to do this. I mean, we don't have any objections really, so her attaching onto our system, because, you know, people outside the village have to pay double rates. That's why she's paying $100, because we're all paying $50, pretty close to it. So I suppose he could go down there and lay out what needs, what would be required. And then they can, he started maybe putting the letter and send it back. Okay. Anyways.
It's kind of hard to explain in the letter, but Brian could go down and explain to them and send them a letter after he explained it to them, you know, the details or whatever, I think.
Yeah. It's, it's a little tricky. It's, and we don't want to get, and then they're totally responsible for the maintenance of their sewer pipes and everything, because they're privately owned. And that can be problems still. Okay. Is that all, is that all you have?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to request the executive session to discuss the employment history of two employees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We need to request a separate executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Actually, we don't have to do that because he's not here, right?
Well, we can talk about it. Seven hundred seventy-three.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, you don't have to do it.
We can't do anything. We're not supposed to be here and tell us, you know. Okay, I'll retract that one. We don't need that. Okay, grants. We are at a point right now where we've got two major grants in works. One of them is the Recreation Center Grant, and the other one is the Northern Border Regional Commission, which has to be in by May 10th, and that's pretty substantial. I sent a letter of, a letter of intent that we wanted to do it about a month or so ago. What I recommend, you all got the proposal from Elevate 518? Did you all receive that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's Steve Peters who wrote the grant request in the first place before he left. I would recommend that we, that we hire him for the Northern Border Regional Permission Grant to follow that up. What that grant is for is to see if we can get money for the two road extensions, if we get them from Pfizer people, Pineview and, what's the other one?
Pineview Terrace.
Pineview and Beechwood.
Beechwood.
And also upgrades to our water plant, or our new water plant. If you get some money for that, to get that going.
We're gonna have to be kind of careful as far as the water plant is concerned, because if you have too many grants and too much money, or if your system is running pretty good, we're not going to qualify for a new filtration system, a new, a new water plant. As you, as you're aware of.
Yeah.
We've got an RFP out right now for a commission for a water plant study, so I'd.
Well, that might be, we could.
Just like a little precaution.
We could cut that part out of it for now.
Yeah.
And have it for the other things for the.
Would be natural, the road.
The road.
Absolutely. I'm sure we could find some other things, but a water plant is.
Yeah.
Then the other thing is, okay, we need, we need a coordinator for the PLM electric study, which is crucial for the next process of getting some tenants up at the, up at the Pfizer property up there. And we already authorized that study. We haven't got it back yet. We need a liaison between that and, well, we got Kurt Wilson, and we got PLM, and we got Brian.
We got Brian Pelkey. Hopefully, his people know.
PLM did the study. They're done. I mean, they're doing the study. When they get done, that's it. They just hand it to us. Kurt Wilson was, we didn't use him at all for this. We only used him to recommend who to have Doug do the study, which was PLM. He didn't indicate he was going to do anything other than that. It was just, he gave us some names of some people that we could, and we voted on to give it to, to PLM.
You know, it's a system inside and out, so does Mr. Pelkey.
Yeah.
I think it would, it would be wise for those two individuals to take the stuff from PLM and answer any questions.
And how long would that take for the study, for that?
I would think it'd be fairly soon, but the kind of study they're doing is not anywhere related to what the two people that you recommend, that you said would know, would be familiar with, I don't think. The PLM study is to tell us what we can absorb electric usage-wise. It's not, the coordinator of it has to do with working out rates and stuff for these new companies coming in. What kind of deal we can make with them and stuff like that. It's not, it's not like, well, we turn this transformer on and put the other transformer on. It isn't.
As I understand it, that's not what it is.
You've got to have the sizes of the transformer, you've got to have the. Yeah. Yeah. We'll have, they'll get on the report. I would say, okay, if you want, we can leave the PLM study for right now, till we at least get it.
Yes.
Okay? Now, the other, the big one is the Parks Grant, the R E D C E P F Grant. And that's the one that we need. The grant administrator and clerk of the works, we talked about that before.
That's the one for direction.
Right. And that's where we see how much stuff we can, you know, how many other things we could squeeze out.
Who's going to be clerk of the works?
Well, that would be Peters.
If he's there.
If we hire him.
Oh.
That's what this idea is. And what we know is, we know we're going to do the, we're going to level the soccer fields, which would occur in November after the soccer season. We get a company in here to prepare the bids and everything for the playground equipment and have that installed to our specs and remove the old playground stuff. Probably our crews would do that part. And redo the tennis courts, complete the fitness trail at the east end, so it connects on to the thing. Pave the parking lot, and I think there was a couple.
Street lighting?
What's that?
Street lighting. Oh, cool.
Well, we're going to see what we can get, you know, what we want. I mean, we don't want big, very big street light towers.
Well, we've got to have the pickleball fence in.
That was another thing, the pickleball fence, yeah.
But he doesn't give us a rate here either, so we're going to have to meet with him.
No, I think it's a.
Says the rate for this work will be dependent on how the village would like this done. A meeting and discussion on the next step would be helpful.
Okay, we can do that if you want.
So I say, I mean, I have no problem with him doing the Northern Border Regional Commission. I mean, it seems like he's given us a decent rate on there. But we'll have to meet with him and see what his ideas or thoughts are on each other.
Okay, I don't, okay. It would probably be better than he can explain this PLM thing, because I don't, if, if I understand it correctly, I don't think it's what you guys are thinking it is.
Right. So maybe he can come to our next meeting?
Yeah, but I think we should do the other one tonight, because that's.
Yeah, we're going to have to do that one.
The border one, yeah, right away.
Okay, so.
We've got to have that one done by, I mean, that doesn't come out quick.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's.
I'll make a motion that we hire Mr. Peters or Elevate 518 for a flat rate of $1,500 to complete the Northern Border Regional Commission Grant.
Okay, you need a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And then I would say set up a meeting with Elevate 518 to meet with us. When do you want to meet with them?
I think it comes to the next board meeting, I think.
Next board meeting? And that's to discuss the PLM electric study and get going on the.
Parks.
The Parks Grant. Because that one, we really want to get, working on it. You know, we want to, you know, some of this stuff might be 60 days or longer to get the materials. We don't want to end up putting a playground in in October or something.
We'll talk about, well, eight or so months, 10 days for our next meeting or something?
Two weeks, 14 days.
Yeah.
Okay.
He is suggesting, and this is related to you, well, and to us too, that you form a committee of yourself, a board member, and an employee to review initiative directives for Elevate 518. Now, he's recommending that. I don't know what your thoughts are about that.
Well, that, that's fine too. I mean, we have to have him report to somebody. You know, we don't want to just give the contract out and then get a report six months later on how it went or didn't go. You know, we want to stay on top of it, you know? And I would imagine, well, I will, I will request him to give us bi-weekly updates. You know, each meeting will have a letter from where things are going. And that's easy enough to do. Okay, for the, for the rec grant, parks.
Yeah, I don't have a problem being a board member.
I'd like to see what the scope of work is going to be before it doesn't make somebody to do that. Just to see what skills a person should have to administer this grant. You know, we don't even know what the scope of work is yet. We certainly have to have somebody direct the project.
Well, I, I think, to answer your.
And you said, once we meet with him, he'll probably explain that.
You say you want to do it, Dale?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll do it myself and trustee Menard and the facility manager. We'll meet with him and report back to the board. We'll, we'll meet with him, we'll try to meet with him in next week or so, so we can report back to, at the next board meeting, what we found out. I think to answer your, partially to answer your question, trustee Dart, is it has to do with like, okay, let's take one aspect of the playground. Okay, somebody's got to draw up the specs for the playground, send out the bids, have the bids come back in a timely manner, so we can vote on to buy one, because we're talking $60,000 or $80,000. And then in the meantime, coordinate with the village crew to start removing the old playground equipment. We don't want to leave it like, no playground equipment for a couple of months. You know, we want to time it so it's cleared out, you know, pretty close to when the construction thing is. And then pick a, pick a company that has, they can fit it into their schedule. We don't want to have a problem like we did last year with the milling of the streets where we didn't get our name in quick enough, so we couldn't, we couldn't do any street milling, because they were already, they were already spoken for for the summer. So that's why I have a little bit of urgency here with this, because I'm just afraid if we call them up in June or July, which is when we're putting in playgrounds, whoever we pick, it's putting playgrounds all over the country, we might, we might not be on time. So, anyway. We'll meet with them in the next few days or week or so. When's good for you, Dale, on these, like 4:00?
Eighteen, yeah. Two thirty, I get out of work, I'll take thirty, so 4:00.
Okay. See about, how Wednesday or Thursday at 4:00 this week works. Can't think if I get something on Friday. Yeah, Friday I'm going to be gone, yeah. Okay. Okay, so that's where we're on a grant right now. We already did the resolution on the SOR rates. I've been requested to surplus a sander, it's a, a three-yard sander that was on the back of the one-ton dump truck. So I would like to declare that surplus and seek bid offers for it. So make that as a motion.
Second.
Authorizing the mayor to declare that piece of equipment surplus and solicit bids. We'll get the bids at the next meeting, or the offers, and we can approve that, okay? Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The sander surplus. Now, we have the suite program. Did you get any stuff on this?
Nope.
Okay. Well, this is informational purposes. This one work source, Business Employment Center in Plattsburgh, I guess it is, provides six weeks of employment experience for teens at no cost to the village. So, it's young adults aged fourteen to twenty, we're requesting sixteen-year-olds or older. They can work up to twenty-eight hours a week, it's a six-week program from July eighth to the sixteenth. Rec department would like to get two for the summer, and they'd be doing things like weed eating, mowing lawns, but private pushmowers. Um, I, I said specifically, I don't want them operating any village vehicles, except maybe the club car on the, on the grounds here, depending if they have a driver's license.
Right.
Anyway, um...
Will they take local people?
They're gonna just send us people. I mean, kids put in for this program and they find work for, for the summer.
Now, are they gonna have to have steel-toed shoes and all that stuff?
Um, they get, let's see, how does this work? They get the equipment, they're gonna look like us, like our people, like they'll get t-shirts and probably pants. I don't know if we'll buy them, we might buy them a couple pairs of shoes, huh? I mean, each one, a pair of like sneakers with steel toes in them or something. You know, you can get steel-toed shoes for fifty bucks.
Can we check first to see if they're willing to supply with people?
Well, obviously, you know, if they're gonna give it, if they're gonna supply them with the stuff, then we won't have to do it.
Right, yeah.
But if they don't...
Can we check with them?
Well, yeah, we check, have gloves and safety glasses and...
No, we'll have all that stuff, you know? We're gonna give it to them, we'll make them, you know, wear protection and all that kinda stuff. So apparently, um, it's a, it's a pretty good program.
So it's a two-week program?
No, six weeks.
Six weeks.
Yeah, free. So, okay, so, we'll get, see if we can get a couple there. I don't know if any other departments, you know, I, I think the only thing that's really appropriate is the rec department. You know, they're not gonna do any good for public works or some... I mean, they can empty the, the dog bags, you know, the dog stations and, you know, pick up litter around the place and, you know, pull weeds in the flower gardens, whatever they, you know, whatever they need them for, light work, you know?
Yep.
All right? The RFP, um, we put out a request for proposals for the water plant. It's, the deadline is April twenty-sixth, which is Friday. Uh, so far, we've got two in, and we're expecting a couple more. Sent out to, you know, legitimate companies that do this stuff, so, that's just where we're going with that. We have a resol... Resolution for the NIPA annual meeting, our proxy. I don't think I have a copy of that. I don't have a copy of that. Thank you. Okay, this is to give our proxy to the, okay. Whereas the board of trustees of Village Rouse's Point is a municipal member of the New York Municipal Power Agency, and whereas in accordance with the bylaws of New York Municipal Power Agency, each municipal member may cast one vote on each transaction properly brought before this meeting. Now therefore be resolved that NIPA Board of Directors is hereby designated as the accredited delegate of the Village Rouse's Point. Move that to the floor in a second.
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 Okay, I have the rule call vote, trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Okay, um, civic center update. Oh, we also have to do this, oh, this is on your, I mean, this transformer thing?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, got a, a report from the, everybody got it, from Ms. Shields on the recreation center facility. They've been working very hard this last couple of weeks, well, they've been working hard for a while. The pickleball courts have been installed, the indoor ones, and everybody's excited about that. It's gonna start Wednesday, uh, from five PM to eight PM, and also on Saturdays from nine to twelve. They're gonna use the seasonal help to man these hours, once we get the seasonal help in. We're not gonna do it with any overtime. They've been working on the locker room doors, I was in last week checking on that. They're sanding down those metal doors that were getting all rusty, pretty big job. They finished a wall in locker room two. Uh, they've worked on fixing the indoor bleachers. Speaking of bleachers, that was one of the things in the rec grant, was to get our bleachers outside, conforming with safety regulations, they have to have railings and stuff on them. They're doing spring cleaning in the inside when it's raining outside. The outdoor pickleball and tennis nets are up. Uh, they had number of requests to use the pure gazebo for Easter Sunday by several churches, and that was approved. Um, they've completed, throw a garbage pickup outside the village and along the fence line. They've got the Kubota ready to go with all its maintenance on it, and they're working on the Cub Cadet next, but it's got a dead battery. The damaged dugout. Now, as you know, one of the dugouts blew down this winter, and it just exploded. And there was a lot of, it was partially on the recreation center trailers, a bunch of complaints that we get it off the trail. The problem was, it was frozen in the snow. So, I went out about, two and a half weeks ago, I was down here talking to the facility manager, and she didn't have any help that day, 'cause both her guys were out on sick leave. So we went out and we moved the, the pieces they thawed out from the grass. We piled them up on the, made a big pile of it, got it off the trail, and then she went back later and pulled a bunch of nails out after I left. And then, since then, um, they've gotten all the parts removed, the broken parts from the, from the dugout, except for the roof, which is intact and will be able to be reused. Uh, one of the things that the board has to decide and give some direction, which I can do through the, you know, through me for the rec center part of it, is what kind of, what kind of dugout do we wanna replace that one with? Now, the options are, we have three options, maybe more. We can replace it the way that it was, which I personally don't care for. I don't think they look that good, that particle board and...
Well, you gotta use plywood, you know, waterproof plywood, I mean, exterior plywood or something.
I don't even use them, yeah.
Well, this is, this is, that's one option. You know, rebuild it the way it was with better quality materials.
Right.
Option two is, the original way that, that, that softball league proposed to me, when they built it originally twenty years ago, was they wanted to build it out of chain link fencing, and just have a roof on it for sun. And the idea, the whole idea of the dugout is to keep a kid from getting beaned with a foul ball. That's the purpose of it, for safety. It's not to be sheltered in the rain, because if it rains, they get rained out and they go home. And it's not for, you know, winter or anything, 'cause it's, you know, a summer deal. And the idea that they thought of with the chain link fencing is, it's not gonna fill up with leaves and debris like the other ones can. You don't have any shenanigans going on in there, 'cause it's all open. It just seemed like a maintenance-free kinda way to do it. There's nothing to paint, because it's galvanized chain link fencing. So that's option two, set the poles in and, and use the slabs the way they are, put that in and the bench, reuse the old roof. Then the third option, which I talked to, uh, our village mechanic had an idea. He said, if we built it with four-by-fours for the uprights, and we, it horizontal wood along the bottom, maybe about three feet up, we were thinking like pressure-treated decking, five-quarter decking, horizontally around there, and then from there, up, chain link fencing. And the advantage of that is, you can get four-foot chain link fencing at Lowe's, I think. Do you have a count there? Whereas if we do the whole thing, you'd have to get eight-foot chain link fencing, that'd be special order from somebody, and it might be a big deal. And so that's what he was thinking. So, before the rec facility starts building it on their own, I think the board needs to give a little direction here, which way you wanna go, and what we need to be building there. What's your thoughts?
I'm in favor of the last one, yeah?
No.
Put the...
Five-quarter board, five-quarter board of chain link fence, and then, what'd they got for a roof out there? How's that roof, what is...
Perfect, it's, it's fairly, I think it's a new roof. They just put new tin on it, like, last year or the year before. It's a big, flat roof.
Can they lift it?
Well, we'll have to, you know, get a loader or something, probably get that, that...
Maybe instead of four-by-four, we use six-by-sixes?
Yeah, or four-by, four-by-sixes.
So it doesn't, so it doesn't blow down?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
You know, make sure we got...
Four-by-fours are not very sturdy on the ground.
And I was thinking myself, like, twelve-foot four-by-sixes. That way you get them down below the frost level. Uh, John was saying you get those, um, what do they call them, trailer tie-downs or something? Said they're two bucks a piece, you know, just some kinda strap.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to design it right, you know, you got to bolt it on instead of nailing it on. You have to put those straps on there, because it's gonna catch wind. But it's not gonna catch as much wind as the other ones did, right? 'Cause they just were just a solid wall.
So if we do the one, are we gonna do both?
Well, we'll do one for now, you know, and think of, but see how, see how everybody likes it first, you know? Might wanna modify a little bit, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I like the third option.
How do you feel, Tom?
Yeah, I don't know, sounds good.
Third one?
If the wind gets a chance to get in there, and not trapped, not enclosed, it'd be less likely to lift up. Go through.
Yeah. Now, he was talking about, well, he's saying the four-by-fours, putting them on top of the slab. And I said, I don't know how that's gonna, I don't think that would work, myself. I think it'd need to be...
Better put a minute, right?
Right in the ground. Talking about...
The way you get, I mean, if the way gets underneath, it gets that roof...
Three or four on each side?
Well, it all depends how big the thing is. I made it for sixteen by, by eight, or what is it, twenty by eight, or...
No, I don't think it's, it's not eight feet, I don't think. I think it's about five or six feet. It's not that big, 'cause it's just one bench along the back wall.
Probably sixteen by six.
And that would also make it easier to put a bench in, too, if we do it that way, 'cause you can just mount it on the back wall, you know? Okay, well, since that's the board's opinion, I will relay that in, uh...
Long enough, strong enough to take, especially, the kids are gonna be pulling on that fence and this and that and everything when they're in there. So you wanna make it so it doesn't stretch.
Right.
You know, you have a long span where they can pull.
Well, I said, that's the other thing, John says, you wanna get commercial fencing and not some, like, like...
Right.
Residential fencing that bends and stretches and everything, as you said, or that big dent sticking out of it, which you will.
And I think...
Again, we can rectify it. You guys didn't like it for the dogs, but it might work real well for the, for the softball guys. Well, okay.
Whatever.
Just thinking outside the box here. Okay, I will relay that, and I will make sure that, um, the rec center people coordinate this with, so we get a good design on it, 'cause I don't wanna just, you know? And, um, okay, and then she mentions about the suites program, which I already briefed you on that. She requested two people if we approve it, so... Okay, that's, uh, all I have for now. Trustee Arnold?
Okay. We have a substation transformer maintenance project. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead with this project.
Second?
Well, but everybody, everybody has a copy of it.
Yeah, we have to go out to bid for this, right?
Yeah.
So you wanna make a motion to go out to bid for the, for the maintenance of the transformers?
Right.
Okay, so it'll be, just, just read that off, that's what the bid is for.
I don't have the, I don't have the sheet. Okay, Municipal Electric Utilities Substation Transformer Maintenance Project.
And you wanna go out to bid for that?
I'd like to go out to bid for this, for, uh, for the summer project.
Do you have a copy of this yourself?
Yes, I got, I forgot it, it's in my other papers.
All right, and motion is, do you have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
Okay?
Okay, then we have the fire department pump. It's a, it's an air pump for the three zero three, and it's gonna cost about four thousand dollars to have it repaired. Or fix one the other, just to...
How much can the one is, man?
About twenty thousand dollars. That's what I talked to the chief tonight about and stuff, and he said about twenty grand for a new one. So, this guy from Swanton is gonna repair it for the fire department.
Is he gonna adjust his, his budget around to cover that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he said he talked to our sen, and see what he could do, change this and change that.
Right.
Uh, delete probably a uniform or two or stuff like that.
Yeah.
Or fire gear, so...
Okay, so this is really informational purposes?
Right, that's all of it.
Okay, well, that's good, because it's pretty significant.
Right. And I'd like the executive session to discuss in front of a particular, particular person?
Okay, you need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And this is just for personal purposes, too, the, the pump for the tanker. With, if they fix that pump for the tanker, it's gonna cost about forty-six hundred dollars. So they're gonna put it on the back burner right now, 'cause it, I'm pretty sure it needs a couple impellers. The impellers are broke, and with all the gaskets and stuff you need for it, stuff is about six, forty-six hundred dollars. So they're gonna put that on the back burner for now.
'Cause, you know, there's, there's a lot of questions about that tanker.
Well, that's it.
I mean, do we even need a tanker anymore?
Well...
Well, we kept it because we had it all paid for, and it was a good piece of equipment, so...
We used it quite a bit, and stuff.
Yeah, but we're not required to have a tanker for that.
No.
But I mean, they bought, what they did is, the original pump, I don't know how badly the original pump is broken.
Apparently not fixable.
Not fixable. So they got a free pump from another fire truck, from another fire company, gave it to us.
Well, it's thirty-five years old.
Unfortunately, well, the mechanic didn't get a chance to test it while it was on the truck to see, you know? Like, when you take an engine out of a car to use it in another car, if you can run it before you take it out...
The mechanic was told that the pump was in pump, ready to pump.
Right, I know. And he told me he didn't get a chance to test it himself.
Right.
And then, for whatever reason, the donor truck was given back to the company it came from before he had a chance to get all the fittings he needed for it. Oh, there's, there's, you know, you're going to have hours about this. Anyway, so, that's where we stand on that. Now, one of the, one of the recommendations, or an idea that somebody came up with, not me, but, they said, for what little, they use that truck for actually pumping into it. You know, like, you can fill it with a fire hydrant, you just can't squirt water off the front of it like you used to be able to. You can't discharge water from the front. They said, we could get a regular portable self-contained gasoline pump, like we already have, and make a bracket on the front bumper for that to take it out of a compartment, set it on the, on the front bumper, and hook the hoses up to it that way, have it already plumbed in. It would be a lot simpler than trying to get...
Well, Johnny can do that right now, they do it right now to hose off the streets.
Right, and that's what he was, that's what he was thinking, but apparently there's some pushback from the department.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, I'm just saying, there's other options besides spending four thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, they're gonna put this on the back burner anyhow, they're not gonna do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's way too much money, the chief said.
Yeah, especially when the air pump blew up on the other... Okay, so, so...
And I'd like to give my condolences to one of our village employees, you have a brother that died, from the village board and the mayor. Okay?
All right. I'm gonna say who it is.
Cherry Pravetta's brother.
Okay.
Uh, death in his family, so...
Okay. Okay, we'll send the, has they had his funeral or anything yet, or...
Not that I know of, I don't know. This was last week.
Okay, we should, probably send something over for that, then? Card or something, is that what you want, then?
Yeah, send a card or, or whatever.
Okay, we'll talk about this after the meeting, 'cause it will be unofficial.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, trustee Dart? And trustee Menard?
Uh, all I have for this evening is to request an executive session to discuss employment of history of a particular employee.
Okay, you need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Other reports, uh, oh, we have the librarian here.
Wow, we had our best egg hunt ever. It poured rain. Sunday was beautiful, Monday poured rain. So we had nice weather, it was dry, we had between three and four hundred people show up.
Wow.
Had a, yeah, a great time, it was fun, Katie, everybody had fun. Um, and we got a grant from Stewards for about five hundred and eighty dollars to help pay for the summer program.
Oh, good. I was in there last week, you weren't there, and it was full of girls. They had so many girls in there, you could hardly move. They were all about four or five years old, but there was a lot of them in there, and their mothers. I don't know what was going on exactly, but it looked like the library was being used.
Storytime.
The library should be used. I, I was pretty happy to see that.
Yeah, I heard the, uh, the part-time librarian told you that you could come in, 'cause the library wasn't open.
You couldn't even park in there, there were so many cars, I had to return a couple books, 'cause I didn't wanna, she, she was gonna kick me out, so I'd have to pay the overdue thing. Anyway, um, I understand we've, we've been working on the furnace, we've got a lot... Anyway, um, I understand we've, we've been working on the furnace, we've got a lot of the parts on hand, been delivering, and I, I think they've started soldering...
It's like an IKEA furnace, just never expected to come in twenty-seven boxes.
Yeah, there's a lot of it down there, and we still, I mean, they're gonna put that together pretty soon, and then we'll just have, we'll wait until, I guess the ground's a little more thawed out, then the electric department will come in and, and put that, service in. Actually, that's a real good training project for a new guy.
Yep.
You know, start off with something like that. So, anyway...
And also, um, the lights, I guess, are gonna take a little bit of time to get in, so I've been leaving the shelves empty, cause I didn't want to clean them off and put the books on and then have them run the lights and make a mess right on top of it all. So plan B, um, we will go ahead and start using the shelves, and when they put the lights in the ceiling, they're just gonna cover everything up with tars.
I don't think it's gonna make that big of a mess, because they're just putting some L E D. lights down there, and now that we know where the shelves are, they can put the lights in the aisles, and I don't think he was gonna put that many units in anyway.
Well, they gotta drill holes with, uh, floor joists.
Yeah, it's hundred year old glue.
Yeah, gonna have to go in series.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, gotta...
But they'll just cover it up, so we can start with the shelves.
Inside the, the floor joist, and it would be staple the, on, underneath it.
But don't they have to use, uh, conduit for that?
Well, not downstairs.
Not downstairs.
Well, anyway...
It's that electric fence you want, it's that electric fence you want, aren't there some metal shelves?
There we go. That's why you got metal shelves instead of wood shelves. Okay, um, code officer, Mr. Cooper?
It's very quiet, nothing really reported to me, but things are starting to look pretty good around the village. Several applications for, uh, different businesses to do new things, and, uh, actually, actually, maybe it's because we had a sunny day, things are looking hope.
Yeah, well, you know, the sun comes out. Okay, um, our sen, do you have some...
Yeah, I just, no, I just want to report that we got the audit report back from V S T. I passed that out to the board members on Friday, and you guys have a chance to look at it, so.
That's the audit report?
Yes.
Okay. So we did okay? Okay, that's good. And I see we're, the reports, that new bill report looks pretty good.